Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone here today. We have a few people in the house, finally. So I'd like to start off with teacher, staff, and community comments. Is there anyone here or online that would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the agenda as written.
All in favor?
Aye.
In old business, does anyone have any old business to bring before the board? I had a couple of things just to ask about. In the last meeting, we had asked if Greg could look into setting up the AV at Rutland Town. Greg, can you...are you on there right now?
It's Greg.
He's on the top right.
Yep.
Well.
Greg Caneers?
Again.
Okay. Last meeting, we had discussed looking into what it would cost to make the school able to have this type of meeting for hybrid purposes. Were you able to look into that yet, or can you get back to us next meeting?
The quote to set up the...all of the equipment involved would be about $4,000.
Thank you.
That would include mics, the cameras required, whether they be stationary or mobile, a board and a projector of high resolution. There is some supply chain problems with, you know, projectors, certain ones in the boards, but I think it just...I think that quote is...pretty much stands and it's all dependent on where... where the proper locale kind of tests out after we, you know, do measurements and things of that nature. Was there a round of possible locales within the building that were being considered, or was it primarily the spaces being used now, like the library?
I think it was the library or the cafeteria.
Cafeteria would be hard because of the monitors. Yeah, but we didn't...we had the portable stuff. I think if we're going to install stuff... If we're going to install stuff to stay, I think the library. Sarah, what do you think?
Our librarian's right here in the audience?
Yeah, Anne?
I think the library would work.
Our hope is that tapestry will be back, so I think, you know, if we're getting ready for a board meeting, if tapestry goes until 5:30, you know, that may be kind of rushing it. So I thought the library worked well in previous years.
Acoustics-wise, it's nicer too, right?
Yeah.
Well, there's speakers already in place, I believe, in the library and so it's set up for audio. Setting up mics wouldn't be a problem. The only thing is finding a wall to mount a board like that. The only place in previous years has been that ALCO. But that was supposed to be for instruction. It's not a good meeting space. It's just there's not enough legroom. So it would be in rearranging the shelving and to find a wall to house either a projector or to house a smart screen or something of that nature. Wall space will be a consideration if considering the library.
I'm sure...Kelly, is it okay if you have a smart board?
I think we should take the measurements of where the projector currently is, the smart TV.
Yeah.
And I mean, if we're just trying to mimic what you have here, that board should work. It's big enough. It just would depend on how much space you need. It's not so wide. But all of the shelvings against the wall.
Yeah.
So it might work. It might feel a little cramped, but I'd take measurements of that space and see if that would work because everything's kind of hooked up there, other than microphones or...
So are you saying to leave it where it is or to move it?
I would look at leaving it where it is because that works best for me as opposed to adding another one or, you know. But I would first look at that space where it's at and see if you can fit there. And if not, then we can look at maybe moving it.
Yeah, I'm imagining the student-led conference that I attended in that little ALCO and I'm not sure...
I thought you wanted intimate.
I'm not sure all of this table will fit there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Understood, understood.
So maybe, can we just look into it and talk about it next meeting about if it's viable or not and then go from there?
Yeah, do you want to just come take a look again with just a different lens?
Yeah.
Or Greg anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah. Greg, would you be able to pick a time to go and check out the library and see what may work?
Of course.
Thank you so much. And then the other thing is we had mentioned having Representative Terenzini come and talk to the board. Were you able to contact him, Chris?
No, I just needed to know what meeting you want me to invite him to.
Next meeting?
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
Just Sarah and Terenzini, no one else?
If anyone else is interested, but he's our rep for Rutland Town.
Just to know if you want anyone else?
We have, yeah, we have Senator and Representative Terenzini.
We can ask any of the senators if they'd like to come too.
Yeah, Brian.
Yeah. Brian, Cheryl, and Brian. Josh, thank you. So if there's no other old business, we'll move on to new business. And we'd like to welcome the students in the audience to come up and give your presentation on the Rainbow Club.
Hi, I'm Kristen White, I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, I'm Kenna McGlough, and I'm also in eighth grade.
And I'm Madeline Rose.
And I too, I'm in eighth grade.
We're here to propose a support club LGBTQ students, the Rainbow Club. In this club, we would like to meet once a month to educate each other about topics of R T S. We would welcome allies and members of the community alike. We will be working on creating a community of LGBTQ students that feels safe and supportive, a place where we can feel free to express ourselves with no judgment for who we are. Our school needs this club for many reasons. Like to educate and reduce discrimination. The main reason we need this club is to support the mental health of LGBTQ students. We would like to present to you some facts that we compiled.
Quote, "The Trevor Project estimates that at least one LGBTQ youth between the ages of 13 to 24 attempts suicide every 45 seconds in the U.S. Overall, more than 1.8 million LGBTQ youth between the ages of 13 and 24 in the U.S. seriously consider suicide each year. And we also estimate that at least 1.2 million LGBTQ youth age 13, 18 in the U.S. consider suicide each year. And also additionally, we even further estimate that at least 693,000 LGBTQ youth age 19 to 24 in the U.S. also seriously consider suicide each year."
These are terrifying statistics and to think...these are terrifying statistics. Now think how many LGBTQ students struggle with mental health that does not lead to suicide.
I can say certainly that LGBTQ students at R T S experience struggles with mental health and having the safe community will help. A place where kids can feel safe and have someone looking out for them can be monumental. But having a whole community call you by your preferred name and pronouns can help so much more. Creating a space to accept LGBTQ students and educate others will really help the whole of our school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not to the studios.
Not right now, thank you. We'll definitely take it into advisement.
Thank you.
Sweethearts. Did you want to go over this or...?
Yes. Oh, I'm so sorry, Al, I missed...I skipped your presentation. We'll go back to that now, real quick. So... Yes.
As I would be. It's okay. So some time ago, I presented you guys with some data that you had requested to look at, and I've come back to show you the winter MAP data, which allows us to measure growth. So just by way of explanation, I've put a chart in here stating what it, you know, outlining what is MAP growth as a test. Pretty much, it's a computer adaptive test, which means that it adjusts the questions based on the answers students give to try and zero in on their achievement value. It's nationally normed, which means we look at students nationally, how they perform, and calculate an average, and then we compare our students against that national average. And it's Common Core aligned, which is one of the reasons that we've picked that test to give. It's given three times a year. One thing I want to stress is every time we show it, it's just a snapshot at a single point in time. It's nothing more than that. And it's something that we look at in conjunction with other data points as well. So it's not a single test that we use to figure out what we're going to do. We look at it with other things like student grades, student work, S-Back tests, and a number of other factors. So having said that, you guys have seen data similar to this before. This is pretty much a stacked bar chart that we've split percentages of students up into five bands. I don't know if you have questions about that, but we have high, high-average, average, low-average, and low. And each one of these buckets, like in kindergarten, 21% of our students are in that high band, in this case for reading achievement. This particular presentation, we took the data and put it together. This is the same presentation showing you that we showed the staff back in February after we had taken this exam. So the staff at every school in the SU, including Rutland Town School, have reviewed their data. They've had a discussion around it. They've come up with action plans and things that they want to do moving forward based on this data and those discussions, and looking at other data that they have available too. Over on the right, these are...I left those there just so you guys had an idea of what we did with it. These are the questions that we posed to staff members and had them answer, hopefully to guide them into a real discussion around this data. I don't know if you guys have any questions about this particular chart. This is the growth chart, correct?
Well, here's the achievement. You ready for the growth?
So the first chart was the achievement. The next chart shows growth. And then there's one more chart that I put together after the growth, which is this quadrant chart. And essentially what I've done is I've calculated Z-scores for the percentile bands. And I know I'm getting a little technical with that, but it shows you how far away from average you are. And I plotted growth over on the Y-axis and achievement on the X-axis. And that gives you a good idea. I have students who maybe they're achieving...they're high-achieving students, but from test to test, their growth isn't as high. Sometimes I have achievements whose growth is high, but their achievement is low. In this case, we've averaged together all of the student data points. So each one of these points stands for a grade level, and then you can see where they are on the quadrant chart. Recognizing that I only have about five minutes, I've done this for reading. The next set of charts is language usage, so there's three charts that are similar to that. And then the following set of charts is for mathematics. I think you guys have it in your packets. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at it or if you have any questions around any of those charts or how to read them.
Can you just show everyone online and in the audience, just go through them quickly?
Sure.
So you want to start here or?
Okay. So we've been through the...we've seen the reading charts. Again, here is our language usage achievement graph. It starts with grade two because in the second...for this particular test, we're assuming that students know how to read. So there's a split in grade two where you have students who are independent readers and some students who are not. So we wouldn't have a score before second grade. And then...but only part of our second graders get that test, at least SU Y. Third grade and up to eighth grade, we have data for all of our students. So that's our language usage achievement. This is what the growth looks like. You guys a couple of seconds to look, and then the quadrant chart. And again, like before, you know, you can see most of our points are on this side of average for achievement, so that's above average. And we have a fair number of points that are above average in growth as well. We move on, here's our math achievement. Obviously, you want more blue, green, and yellow. Those are the buckets we want to see. Math growth. And the quadrant chart. Does anyone have any questions about the data charts?
I...
Did you have a question?
Yeah, sort of an open-ended question, but... I mean, can anything be...I'm just trying to look at like what grades end up in the high achievement, high growth. And whether it's language, arts, math, or reading, it kind of varies on what... It's not like one grade is a high achiever in it. So can you derive any best practices out of this, or is it purely like population-driven? I mean, if like sixth grade is high achieving and high growth in all three subjects, you know, like what is it that those teachers are doing that another one isn't, or is it...
Thank you.
Or is it like, you know, is it subject matter that's being taught that is at a different pace? I don't know. I don't have the answer, so I'm just trying to be able to wrap my head around.
There are a number of factors that go into any one of these data points. And some of those factors can be the cohort of students. So some groups of students do better than others at varying times. Again, this is a snapshot at a point in time too. So there are things that affect that, like is there something strange going on in the community? Did something happen to somebody's best friend? An individual student may have an issue that affects an entire class. Sometimes, yes, there are best practices, and then you may want to have other teachers from the school or from the SU visit that classroom if they're high achieving to see, hey, what are they doing that's good? I want to copy that and replicate it in my classroom. So yes, those things do happen, and we do try and point that out amongst the staff so that we can share knowledge.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question. I know we haven't received the S-Back data yet, but when you compared it to that, did you see any similarities or were they different? Like, did they match, I guess?
There are some similarities. I can't really present that now to show you guys because it is still embargoed unfortunately.
I was just curious how reliable the MAP is compared to that.
They're two...they are two very different tests. So that's one caution I will throw out there. The MAP test is really used to measure student growth. Yes, it's Common Core aligned, as is the S-Back test. But the S-Back is really measured...it's out there to measure specifically proficiency and achievement, and it's used for external accountability. Whereas this MAP test is used as a screener to find out if some students are in trouble or if some students need extra help in the classroom. It's also used for planning purposes in the classroom level. You can take a look at a classroom grouping of students and figure out, okay, there's a set of skills that this class tested well on, there's a set of skills they didn't. And then you can get those students that need the help, the help they need. But they are really two fairly different tests. And again, this is a nationally normed kind of test, whereas S-Back is not.
That's just for lot or...?
I think S-Back is used in 23 states now. I could be wrong on that number. The number was higher at one point, but... So it's not just for not using the S-Back.
The very last one, yeah, the very last page, you've got the goals for '22, '23.
Yeah, we're going to get there in just a second.
Okay, sorry, I'll wait.
That wasn't my page to talk to specifically.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That I am going to allow Sarah to talk to. She and I and Eric spent some time talking, and we prepared a page that shows goals and future plans based on discussion with the staff, looking at this data and looking at other data. So we work fairly closely, and we talk about the S-Back scores, the MAP scores, other data that we have, and other concerns that we also might see coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for your time.
Any other questions for me before I turn it over to Sarah?
Do you have a question, Marcia?
I do. Al, do you have, like, for our student body, is there a percentage of like how many people are in the meeting to the exceeding? I know it's like orange, green, and blue, I think. I didn't know if you...like, I...the charts are awesome, but I just think overall in our student body, like for reading, how many of our student body that was tested, you know, 60% of them are there? And then for language and math, I didn't know if that was a...
I did not put that together for the entire student body, no. I could, but I haven't done it, specifically because it makes more sense to break it out by grade level. Any last questions? Okay, the last slide, I'll turn it over to Sarah and Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. So yeah, we talked about that we would, of course, like to see all of our students achieving with high achievement in that growth quadrant, regardless of their current achievement. And then Eric and Alina and our leadership group has worked really hard on... I'll let you, if it's okay, Eric, share a few things about our master schedule for next year and some plans that we have.
Yeah, again, we like to see everyone in the high-growth, high-achievement. And even if they're not in the high-growth, high-achievement, at least they're doing high-growth, and we want that also. The more students can learn each year to help them for the next year is what we're looking for. So one of the things we looked at with these slides, we looked at our master schedule and looking at where can we help students and teachers with this reteaching time or helping students have the high growth. So we looked at master schedule, and we thought about flex time and rewriting flex time, what it'll look like. I know as a district, we're looking at that, and also for independent study. And we were going to continue with the professional development around UDL and proficiency-based education, as the district is showing us. A lot of good stuff coming from there, so there's no sense of adding more PD. Just can keep on doing what we're doing, coming from the district, because we're going in the right direction with that. And really utilizing our coaches in the district. So whether it's Abby Bennett or in our case, Alina Weehoff, using them to help our students and our teachers meet those kids who are struggling and help to raise that growth up.
So that's our social emotional...sorry, there's lots of abbreviations on there. Our social emotional learning to help those kids that emotionally are having a really tough time.
And is this something that you're working on right now or looking to work on next school year?
We're constantly working on it, but we're refining. Eric's worked really hard on revamping our schedule.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back to new business. Next thing we head up to discuss is a snow day/COVID day discussion. And Chris, did you want to...?
So I know at the GRCSU meeting after break, there are going to be discussions around these snow days, but I do...Rutland Town had a couple COVID days that the rest of the SU did not have. So I just wanted to report when I made a decision on what's going to happen with those days and whether we're going to add additional student days or waive those student days for Rutland Town. So we have two additional...two additional student days what had, so they had to shut down because of COVID-related symptoms that the other schools did not have to do.
So just to clarify, the GRCSU will decide on the snow days that the whole union had. But Rutland Town needs to decide about the extra two COVID days, whether or not we're going to forgive them or keep them. And there's two snow days and two COVID days, is that correct?
Yes.
So a total of four days.
But the two days...
Two days, we don't say anything about that, so the GRCSU. So we're just talking about the two COVID days.
I think right now it's scheduled...
When's the last day scheduled?
Class is 17th.
Last day is the 17th, which is a Friday.
Right, so you're asking Rutland Town...well, if potentially asking, say it stays the same. But Rutland Town students would have to come back the following Monday and Tuesday.
They might have to anyway.
There is a potential for if the GRCSU board discusses that to want those snow days to be made up, we move into the following week, but then Rutland Town had two additional days.
Right.
So we don't know what the GRCSU will say?
Yet. Can we wait until after the GRCU meeting?
Then our meeting won't be until May.
To make that decision, only because... if they forgive the snow days, okay, and then tonight we decide, no, the COVID days we have to make up, then we're asking our students to come back Monday and Tuesday. So the only choice is if they get rid of the snow days, it would end on the 17th. If we said, no, they got to make up the COVID days, then we're saying our students have to come back Monday and Tuesday of the following week.
Or we can forgive those and see what the GRCSU says.
Right.
So we could make up our mind tonight, we just don't have the final answer.
Yep.
Let's go around the table and just give your thoughts. Jeff?
I say waive them.
Waive them.
I say waive them.
Same here.
Doesn't matter. If you got our majority, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I say waive them, no, that's okay.
A motion?
I'll make.
All in favor? Aye. All against? So we're unanimous.
Graduation.
All right, last item on the new business is R T S summer programming. To get a status update on that and what's going on.
Sure. So for summer programming, we would like to offer summer school, general education summer school, which we've always done. I've put that out to our staff last week. We...currently, we don't have anybody right now that's...that is willing to teach summer school. So there is a chance we may not have a summer school this year. As everybody knows, we are in a hiring crisis, and a lot of our teachers and staff have said they just need a break, and I would like to give them that. So I would...I will approach a few teachers that spoke to me earlier in the year later this month, but the hope is that we have general education summer school. I did include in the packet from Marie Gilman, our director of Tapestry. I think it made it on the last page of this slide of the MAP scores. There's just a flyer about the Epic and Tapestry programs. So the Tapestry programs are open to all Rutland Town families, so they're able to attend. But as of today, it does not look like Tapestry will be...we won't have a site at Rutland Town School. So again, it's open to anybody in Rutland Town to attend those programs, but currently, we do not have the staff to have a summer and after-school program. But Marie is actively hiring, so that could change. There is ESER money. There is ESER money that we have put out to teachers and staff that may be interested in doing any summer programming from hiking, cooking, language, music. I have a couple of teachers that may be interested, so I just need to work with them to write a proposal, and that's all that I have right now. So I'm just very grateful that we're able to attend. I have spoken to a few families that are very excited to just have their kids join the Rutland City Tapestry programs, so they'll be able to do that. But I don't have a robust summer program for you all, unfortunately.
So do families know about the Epic and that they should sign up now?
This has been in our newsletter, and Marie has shared that she has reached out to all those families that were previously enrolled in Tapestry to let them know.
Okay, perfect. And then my next question is, what will happen if students need summer schooling in order to advance grades? To avoid retention? What will happen then?
We have to have staffed, I mean, that's...
But what happens to those kids?
I'm not sure. I mean, we have to have a staff, but we also have, teachers are tired, respect that, I don't know.
I mean, students are tired too, I get it.
I get, but I mean, if they're not proficient to go to the next level, then you would have to hold them back. I mean, no fault of ours if we don't have the staff, but we're not doing the students any good by putting, if they're not getting it now after summer, they're gonna be really lost.
Yeah, and we have, those students that are considered for retention, we have a retention policy, I think there's actually a first read in our packet, and so we refer kids to our educational support team that Eric chairs, I used to in previous years, and they, we work with those kids. So it's constant pulling them in, teachers have them during lunch sometimes.
If the team has the summer off and they aren't ready to move on, are we prepared to hold them back if we don't have a summer program? Because we can't...
I don't think we're talking about a lot of kids, and I'm just hesitant to talk up, there's a very small?
Right, but...
Number of kids, if any, in this situation.
Where is the line with the proficiency-based learning? If they are at a two, which is at the very, very, very lowest of approaching proficiency, right, as their grade in, say, math, everything else, maybe they're a 2.5 and higher, which still isn't reaching proficiency. So what do we do for those twos? Do we, like, what happens? Because they're not, they're barely approaching proficiency, they're not meeting proficiency, so what do we do? Do we just pass them on and...
We are having retention meetings now, so they're ongoing, we have one soon. One of the things we're looking at for next year is building in that flex time, that reteaching time, so you're addressing something that needs to happen during the school year also. And I guess we're at the point now where if we can't staff it because teachers are really, really tired, I don't know how to staff it. But I can say that what you're saying is, what Tim was saying earlier about the statistics, very, very important to us. If a kid is not meeting proficiency, what do we do to help that kid become proficient? And one of the focuses that we're working on, I'll be working on some principles this week, is looking at that reteach time, the flex time. How do we get the kids back to where they need to be on track? If we have a student who takes a formative assessment, it's like a quiz, and they fail, they don't do very well, well, we really can't move them on, can we? They need to know the material, so we have to look at how to get them that extra teaching, that reteach time. So what you're saying is, well, we know, we know we have to change, we know we have to look at it. We're, teachers are doing stuff now, I know they hold kids for lunch and they hold them after school. For the summertime, though, I don't have an answer for it. I know part of the interventions that we have to do, the interventions we need to do, it's top priority, it really is, and that's why we've spent so much time so far, we're reworking the schedule to fit that time in, because it is such a priority. We have to help kids who are not passing pass, get them to understand the material, help them understand the material, and with to build that time in.
Eric, when do you start looking at that? Should we start looking at that earlier?
We do.
Retention?
We do.
I mean, I know we've gotten...
Usually needing, like, December if we're even considering that.
Because I know it's not totally unusual at the end of the year to find out, well, you gotta come to summer school, you gotta do this, or you're gonna stay back. And I agree with you, I think we need to catch them up while they're still in the learning mode. You know, I just wanna make sure we're looking at it fast enough to catch them up. And it's not doing anybody, I realize how demoralizing it is to these students if all of a sudden they're being told they're gonna have to be held back. I don't know if that's disciplinarian, if they're not getting there for school, if they're just not understanding, that is your job, but we're not gonna do that child any, they'll gain no benefit by just advancing them. And I think they'll just, if I'm not, I'm not a teacher, but I think they would be more confused than ever coming back at a new grade if they haven't really understood what was behind them. So that's all. You know, I know there are times, once in a while, there is a child that we have to hold back, but...
And that's usually last resort. We exhaust all resources, but that does happen, once in a while, that does happen, and those meetings need to happen early.
Well, that's a community atmosphere. I mean, if the parents aren't behind it, and, you know, I know we're behind it, I know the staff is, the school, but if the parent section isn't there helping also, I don't know how you would really accomplish it. Okay.
Just back to the summer school question. If you can't get staff members from RTS, can you open it up to district and teachers?
Well, I mean, Jeff, that is one possibility, I think we look at our staffing, but I think, as Sarah said, the same problem that Rutland Town's having, I think all our GRCSU's having, and I think it's, and this is by no fault of criticism of our staff, I think our staff have worked tirelessly for the past two years, and I think this is the first time where they really feel they can take a break and step back, and I strongly encourage everyone to do that, I mean, they need to recharge their batteries, so. But you're right, there are a lot of other things, I think one of the things we look at is, how do we build our contingency plans? And I think it's with retention, if you really would see the procedural aspect of it, I mean, it is very intensive, and families have been looped in on it very, very early, so it's not as if in May all of a sudden now, surprise.
Surprise, right, yeah.
I mean, this is something that starts, you know, could start as early as, you know, September, October, but as, so as Sarah had said, when you make that decision to retain a child, it really is, we've exhausted all efforts and we do everything else, so it's just, but if there are opportunities, you know, you look at other schools, if a child's missing, say, oh, a few indicators, a few targets reach proficiency, we may be able to work something across, across that, you know, so if there's someone that's, say, Corey Valley is teaching a third-grade summer program, we might be able to look at that, so. But we don't know staffing yet, we're having, we're having a very, we're having the same conversation, I had Wells at the start of the month, I'll have it tomorrow night, at Corey Valley as well, it's just, it's, it's difficult, I mean, so it's, but, yeah, the kind of reality we're up, so.
Thank you.
We're trying.
Keep up the hard work.
Yeah.
Okay. Next up is finance. Louis?
Good evening, everyone. So the only thing I have tonight is just an update on the anticipated surplus or forecast. So I provided one a couple months ago, and as you recall, we were showing that we were running a small deficit, and then I had worked with the principals and were able to just review a few expenses and see where we thought we were, those expense lines were running to come, which had worked its way into a surplus. But after further review of tuition numbers, we are now looking like we're having a surplus of approximately $190,000. In my report, I gave a detailed, where the why that changed, and so that's, to go through it briefly, when we, when we run our numbers at the beginning of the year, we look at all students that are attending secondary schools based on the rosters that we received from those schools, so Rutland City, Mill River, and we use that data to both build our budget and to develop our forecast. And at that time, when we have that data, we assume that we're gonna be paying full tuition for all of those students. As we get our tuition invoices, those numbers change from year to year. So some of those students may decide to go to Stafford or do early college, and when we get the rosters, we don't necessarily know that, we don't have that data, so we're assuming we're gonna be paying tuition for them. If a student that's attending Rutland City is also attending Stafford, we do not have to pay the secondary tuition cost for those students, we just pay the Stafford tuition. So that then results in unexpected savings. When we budget, we budget conservatively, we budget paying tuition for all the students that we know about, based on the previous year. Again, and so we don't know whether new students will then decide to attend Stafford or early college, and so when they do, those do result in budget savings, and that happens to be the situation here. So when we got those, when we did that first forecast and our, and our budget, we were basing it on that roster, and then when we did get the first invoice and had a chance to analyze it and speak with the schools, we did realize there was this, a bunch of students that we had planned for, for the forecast, that we didn't have to pay tuition for, that resulting in savings. It doesn't affect our budget at this time, because we still, those students will still be here next year, and we still plan to pay tuition for them. However, the same situation could occur next year, where you have new students, then, then will sign up for Stafford and can result in savings. So it's, it's an ongoing thing that we see each year, but again, we budget conservatively because we don't know, and we'd rather have that money budgeted in case they don't sign up for Stafford or early college, and it's great when they do and we have those savings.
Thank you.
Louis, when do you get that invoice? Like, it was discovered in March, or do you get these in December, or when do you get, when do you find out that these students?
You're muted, Louis.
I'm sorry about that. So in this situation, most, most of Rutland Town students attend Rutland City, and we didn't pay the first invoice until January.
Got it.
So the forecast was completed in March, so by the time we paid that invoice and had those actual numbers, I had started the update, the numbers in February and completed that forecast in March.
Got it, okay.
Louis, if I could, I understand the Stafford part. Who pays for early college?
The state pays for early college.
Really?
So if a student enrolls, they, in early college, they have to un-enroll from the high school.
Okay.
And then they, they attend early college at no cost to the district, it's all paid by the state. I mean, you're paying for it in some, some fashion, but not through, not through this mechanism. And then at the end of the year, they re-enroll in the high school, but there's no cost to the district for that, for that student.
Awesome, thank you, I just never asked that before.
It's a really neat program.
It is. Thank you, Louis. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, directors' orders. Have a motion? Or any questions on it, discussion? Make the motion to accept them?
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion to accept the director's orders?
Okay, thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It just doesn't look good when I'm the only name on there.
Next up are the approval of the minutes. Any corrections noted?
I did not, I noticed we were long-winded.
I had a few.
Of course you do.
So on page one, I believe it was Billy that nominated Jeff as vice chair clerk, not Tim, and vice versa, Tim seconded the nomination, is that correct?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Page?
You had the...
Six. It, I had asked about the new 3D printer and whether it was needed as a replacement. I was told yes, and that we also bought a second one, is that correct, Sarah?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I did, and that was brought up at that meeting, so that should be added, that they also bought a second one as usage has gone up.
Mm-hmm.
And then on page eight, I was elected to a three-year term and Tim was elected to a two-year term.
Yes, yes.
Again?
That was corrected, wasn't it?
It was corrected, I don't know what happened. Just on page 11, on Tina confirmed these first-read policies do not need to be voted on, and then continue the agenda instead of the, just a little typo.
Yep.
And again, thank you, Shawna, they are very, very helpful.
Do you ever sleep?
I do. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Thank you, Billy. Next up is the superintendent's report.
All in favor?
Thank you. I just have a few items, because we have a long...
Chris, can I correct myself? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I didn't want to say anything, so. I have a few items to discuss, I know we have a, kind of a long meeting still, a lot of items still to go through, but a lot of the things that I'll mention are Eric and Sarah will talk about in their principal report either, so. So the S-Back assessments are finishing up this week, the 15th is the last date. As you had heard during Al's presentation, the results from last year are still embargoed. Hopefully, those will be released soon, so we can then take a look at those and, you know, see what the next steps are for the following year. But our, it is a little frustrating, I'll just be honest, that's fact that, you know, part of, you know, from a classroom teacher's perspective, a building administrator's perspective is, you want timely results, and I think as we look at S-Back, particularly if they're going to hold schools accountable, and we look at that, that we don't have access to this data, you know, we really should have it, pretty, a pretty quick turnaround for us, so we can begin over the summer, the start of the school year, really start, you know, delving into some deep, detailed plans about how, you know, to really work with our students and look with our respective classrooms, and it makes it very difficult when, here we are still on April, and things are embargoed, and we really can't see, it's just, it's problematic. And I know that, you know, going through COVID and through defiers, but still, I think it's something which, you know, we have expressed to the state that we would like to, you know, a little more timely response and having these back. So it is frustrating for all of us that not having this data in front of us, you know, it is a snapshot, but it is something which does, you know, something we do take a look at and work from. Excuse me. This year, the GRCSU administrative team, which Sarah's been taking part of this, has engaged, the University of Washington's Center for Ed Leadership Instructional Leader Program, the mouthful, and what this program really is designed was, you know, myself, Lisa Madison, Christine Cam, and Kim Stebbin, the building administrators, we really work on calibration of feedback provides to teachers, and we look at the primary role of the building administrator is that of an instructional leader, and how we can work with staff, better support staff to just, you know, work on, you know, just improve instructional practices, work on student achievement, and this has been a year-long process for us, this past, you know, it was last week we went to Burlington, excuse me, I'm sorry, and for a two-day workshop, which was our final workshop of the year, to really kind of calibrate and work on things that we need to do, and I think it's been a year of growth for us, it's been a, been an important step, I know Sarah could talk a little more about this from her perspective, but I know that my four years here prior, we never really had any sort of calibration, and it was, every administrator's kind of left their own devices, and so as, you know, I can speak for Rutland Town, I'm sure as one administrator came in, you know, another administrator came in, there were probably two different levels of feedback, and, you know, and so that was really our goal, is that across all of our buildings, that the teachers are receiving some, some high-quality feedback that they're doing something with. This has been about us, and I say that where we've gone into classrooms, and I know that whenever I walk into a classroom, whenever Sarah or building administrator, people kind of, you know, some people tense up, some people welcome in, there's always different reactions, but it really had, when we went into classrooms, it really has been an exercise really for, for us in terms of, we're calibrated, we're working on how we can continue to improve as instructional leaders, because I think if, our teachers do a phenomenal job, but I think in order for us to continue to work with them on growth, you know, within their respective disciplines, you know, we have to be, you know, understand what we're doing, how we can do a better job as well. And so this whole year really has been around that, about continue to improve our growth, so we can better support our teachers in doing the jobs that they're doing. So we've been out of the building for a couple times this year, I think we have one more in May, I think it's, it was May 5th or May 6th. I think we have one more in May. I think it's, it was May 5th or May 6th. We have to go to Mount Ave where we do a calibration exercise with another district. But it is something which we, you know, we, I think we've highly benefited from. We are looking at whether or not we want to do a year two, whether it be through University of Washington or if it's something which we could continue to do on our own through our admin POCs. But I just wanted to mention that because we briefly talked about this before. I know that Sarah has, and Eric had discussed with their staff what it is. But I also, you know, this is where we're going. It's not just, you know, vacationing or just getting away. It really is some good work that we are. If I was going to take a vacation, would it be Burlington, Doubletree with, with the admin team? It'd be somewhere else.
No offense to them.
Well, they wouldn't take a vacation with me either, so. So it goes both ways. We do like each other, but it's just, you know, work related, so. So I just want to just, you know, kind of talk about that. And I know that there are a couple other informational pieces that were included in your packets. And school meals, you hear a lot about this. I know that we'll wait for legislative session. But we will be providing meals for all families through the end of the school year and we'll see what happens in the legislative session. I know that, that is a bit of a concern. I know that there are, you know, legislators who would like to see us continue this next year. The issue that presents for, for communities and local boards is it would fall back upon our local budgets to provide that. It would not be, you know, be state or family funded. So it's just, it's something we're keeping a close eye on. But I just wanted to mention to families that we will have that through the end of this year, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, principals' report.
Sure, thank you. The University of Washington training has definitely been beneficial and I've shared with other people, I feel that I've been for year two an administrator of public health, self-taught. So I'm really looking forward to a normal school year next year to be a real instructional leader because it has been quite a ride, for sure. So a couple of celebratory things on here. Linda Mullen, as I shared at the last meeting, she was recognized at UVM on Outstanding Teachers Day. Congratulations to Linda. I also included a write-up from Linda Mullen. She had nominated and I also wrote a letter of recommendation to Lori McNeil, one of our paraeducators. She's the recipient of 2022 Vermont Delta Kappa Gamma Service to Education Award. So I attached her write-up to my principals' report. Lori is retiring this year. She has been, you know, part of the fabric of the Rutland Town community. She is just amazing. So very deserving, very happy that she received this award. Sback started at the end of March. Thanks to Ms. Daly for organizing and all of the teachers. It is exhausting. It is a lot. It is hard. I encourage parents to go on to, to try some of those tests themselves. Just manipulating the screen within itself is, is challenging. And our kids are persevering. Our teachers are amazing. The student council, we had our first seventh and eighth grade dance last Friday. It was awesome. We had so much fun. So the student council planned that as a spring fling. It was well-attended. And I can't wait to have more. I didn't realize how much I myself missed middle school dances. It was so fun. Yeah, it was great. Spring sports started at the beginning of April. We are fielding full teams for all sports, baseball, softball, and lacrosse. We have 13 to 15 kids on each team and we do have memorandum of understanding with Rutland City, Mill River, and Christ the King for both girls and boys lacrosse. So it's wonderful because it keeps those programs running. Parent, teacher, and student-led conferences. Every time I write this statistic, I just am like, wow, coming from other schools that, I mean, you maybe get half. But 95% parent participation rate in the spring. I think we were at like 98% in the fall. It's just awesome. So some teachers, just due to illnesses or absences, they're, when Eric and I left the building tonight, there was a few teachers there that were doing more. So I'm sure the number is higher. They were meeting with parents after, after school. Preschool teachers screened 30-plus little kids, April 5th. We have a lot, which is awesome. So we have a lot of little kids that would love to get in our full-day preschool program. Unfortunately, we only have 17 slots. So just today, our preschool teachers reached out to those families, letting them know if they're on the waitlist or if they got into the program.
How is that determined?
So it's, it's a great question. So it's determined by age. So it's, those students on IEPs, they are able to attend and then it's by.
Right, we have to, right.
Right, we have to at least serve them, of course. And then provide services, pardon me. And then it's those kids four or five and then three-year-olds. So otherwise they're, if, if we have a kiddo that just turned, most, I don't, I don't know the ages, but it's really just four-year-olds that are in the program. Kindergarten registration is open, so any kindergarten kids in the fall, make sure your parents go online and register you. That'll be later this year.
Like they're listening to this.
Like they're listening to the board report. Right, yeah. So I had just, I got an update from Kelly Treya for building matters. So the solar is producing once again, which is great. Spring cleanup has started. The skating rink is put away. The softball and lacrosse fields are, people are playing on them. We have a larger security screen installed in the main office. Air filters will be completed by the end of April. Kelly attended the meeting for stormwater. Lynette, I think you sent that to him. So he's meeting with Laura Kenny, Kenny at the end of April to do a property walkthrough again. And the asbestos inspection will be completed this month as well. Some upcoming dates. The book fair this Thursday, 5:00 to 7:00, on the stage of the gym. Families are welcome. The jazz band is performing at the College of St. Joe's for the Rutland Chamber of Commerce.
Nice.
Oh, I did put the book fair in here. Sorry, I didn't see it. Early release day on Friday, April break, kindergarten registration in there. We have Aurora Assembly. The Loyalty Day Parade is back. I'll share these dates later. But we also have the senior luncheon we're planning, the Memorial Day Celebration we're planning. DC's happening.
Concerts?
Field Day. Concerts are coming back, yes. So all of those dates will be in the board report in May.
Good, great.
Yeah.
What is this a picture of? Is this Raya doing a video?
Yeah, I don't want to. So Raya, Raya, she, Raya, you're on my board report. This is Raya. She is a member of our Up For Learning. So we have a handful of students that participate in that. They have worked this year. I, I did not include it in my board report, but I said last month that I would. They have started a suggestion box that's outside Ms. Daly's office. And they also are sending a school climate survey to other students. And I don't know, Raya, if you want to share a little bit about what you were doing holding the video camera? At the Up For Learning? I know you're like, what are you looking at, Miss Tessa?
We were, there was one guy who was filming for a documentary for one of the other schools. And he was filming us doing our meeting. And he let us try his camera just to see how it works.
Oh, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Raya.
And that leads us to personnel. There are three resignations.
I make the motion to accept the resignations as presented.
I'm sorry?
Do you want to say the names out loud?
Yeah, Adam Lanfier custodian, Carrie Bishop pre-Kpara, and Caleb Giles custodian. I would like to have a discussion maybe about why they resigned in executive session.
Well, we can't on all of them. Can you just give a general? Then we don't have to go in executive session.
I would feel more comfortable in executive session.
Yeah.
It's identifying individuals.
I mean, I know we got, we got letters from all three. But, um, it's up to you.
Well, specifically one of them I wanted to talk about. This one.
Oh. It's up to you. You're the boss, boss.
So we'll do that later. But we can accept it. I just want to know more about it.
Okay.
So all in favor of accepting the resignations?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have contract recommendations. We have a, a new hire who is online with us, Allison McNamara, who will be our new math teacher for the seventh and eighth grade. Allison, if you're still listening, would you like to introduce yourself to the board?
Hi, I'm Allison McNamara. Excuse me. I'm from Middlebury, Vermont, and I've been teaching math for 20 years. Thank you for welcoming me.
We're excited to have you. Thank you for being here tonight. Am I supposed to, I'm not supposed to read all this out loud, am I?
I mean, these are just, are these changes or just for new contracts for next year?
Contracts for next year.
All you do have to do is sign and you don't.
I already did that.
Okay, then it's a done deal.
And then, I guess that's it?
Yep.
You can do it by section. You can do a new hire.
Okay.
We don't, we haven't, I don't remember. Usually I just used to sign all the contracts and it was done deal. We never voted on it.
I only signed the teacher ones. I didn't sign anything else.
It's up to you, boss.
So you want us to accept all of them separately?
Well, I mean, there, there are a few that you.
That we haven't discussed yet?
Correct.
So I'll take a motion to accept the teacher con, the teacher contracts for fiscal year '23.
And the new hire?
And the new hire.
Make a motion to accept the teacher contracts.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I thought you were. Now for the support staff. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the support staff to approve David Kelly custodian.
Okay.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I don't know what the difference is between, he's a new hire.
Oh, yes.
Now, I'll also make a motion to approve the rest of the support staff.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, that was a little messy. And then we have extracurricular.
Make a motion to approve the extracurricular contracts.
And that would be for Michael Rowe for athletic director and Callie McGee and Marissa Keyfever for the Rainbow Club. Any discussion?
What's the tentative part?
Because you have to, you're doing it right now.
We're doing it right now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
We have some more non-union support staff. I'd like to wait until after executive session to finish this one. In your packet, there are internal vacancies and GRCSU vacancies.
Still looking for a custodian.
Yes.
Month after month, I'm looking for a custodian.
It's a great place to work. I was cleaning on a Friday night.
Wonderful. You and Angie look good.
Listening to some music.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
You put the rag on your head and everything?
Yeah, I just want to thank our staff too. They've been amazing and our kids have been amazing. They've done trash, recycling, putting up chairs. Some people are vacuuming their own. Everybody is helping.
That's awesome.
Everybody is helping. So thank you, everybody, for, for all of your help and hard work and our kids.
That is, that's awesome.
Yeah. But we'd really like a custodian, so if anybody else. It's a great place to work, good benefits. Call me, text me, email me.
Moving on, I don't have anything extra for the chairs report right now. So we'll move on to policies. We had many second-read policies, so I'd like to clump them together.
Yep, most of them are.
Any discussion on them before hearing a motion?
E4. I'll make a motion to approve D8, D9, E3, E5, G7, G8, F14, C3, D2, E1, G2, H2, and E4.
For that special application, we'll get a code after this, but it's a new policy. That's why it doesn't have a code.
Yeah, because you didn't mention, you didn't read that one. Thank you, Chris.
Yes, that is included.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lynette. All right. There was two on the back. Did you get those two?
Yeah, down here.
E4?
Yep. So those are all first reads, correct?
No, second reads. The one's below our first reads.
Yeah.
All right. So starting with F9, does anyone have any comments? I'm thankful we have two of our members from the policy committee here with us. So if we do have questions, we can ask them as well. I had a question regarding why it has to go to the superintendent. Is that just typical policy or it just bypasses the principal? I was just curious. For a student who is not a resident may attend the school only upon application of a parent or legal guardian to the superintendent of schools. So it has to go directly to the superintendent, not the principal?
Correct.
And that's just how it's done?
That's why.
Yeah. All right.
So what will happen though, Tina, is a lot of times they'll speak with Sarah and then Sarah will say, you need to speak with the superintendent. So it won't just technically bypass. A lot of times, you know, it'll basically be the first point of contact.
Okay, and she just says, you need a contact?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Any motion to approve that policy?
Nope, we can't. It's first read.
Oh, oh, never mind. Continuing on. A1, any comments? I noticed a lot of just little things, like words were together that shouldn't be. It's formatting.
So a lot of this is, we copy or Christine copies it moves from a Word to a Google Doc or I'm just for it, so this will all be cleaned up.
For the second read?
Yeah, for space in the second read, yes.
Okay. And the only thing I wanted to mention is, I know she just copied and pasted, most likely. But under definitions, it underlines policies and not procedures. So either, I think they both should be underlined or they both should not be underlined, just to keep it.
That's on A1.
On A1, yeah. And then there was just three other words on that same page that were together.
We'll take care of a little bit.
F15. And again, I just, there were a lot of the same thing on F15. There were a lot of them where the words were just squished. F16. I found the same thing. There were many words.
We'll check the formats.
Yeah.
Before we do a second read, we checked the format of all of them, so we'll, we'll get all that, so.
Okay. I didn't have anything on G9. Except for one, one smushing of words on the second page.
We'll get it. We'll get all the smushed words and all.
All right, love it. All right. D4, I actually have a check mark. That was okay as is.
This woman needs a life. Really does.
E2. I actually was, I had, I found an issue on this one. I don't know if anyone else noticed it. On, under administrative responsibilities, the third little section, it says, "Any lost learning time resulting from a response to a school crisis or emergency may be made up at the discretion of the superintendent or the school board." Then you go to the last line on the second page and it says, "Any lost learning time resulting from response to a school crisis or emergency shall be made up." So they don't agree.
So one or the other ought to go.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure when we've talked about this before that we like to keep it more flexible. So I think the first one is better. So, I think the first one is better and they should cross out the last line.
Yeah, I agree with that because situations are different.
On G6, I did not find anything. I actually chuckled when I read this one on D7. Because it says, under age harassment, that it's only if it's directed towards someone age 40 or older, which shocked me, to be honest.
Why would it say 40?
I don't know, but I don't think it's appropriate. I think that age discrimination or age harassment can go either way. I think it can go older, I think it could go younger. So, I think it should be removed.
I do too, I agree with that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, not that, you know, I'm not going to make the difference in it. Well, say you've got somebody of childbearing age. Oh, we can't bring you on because we can't afford to have you go.
Right.
Definitely. I missed that completely, I don't know how.
And then F24. I already sent this back once to just have one word changed and it came back again without change. "Complies" instead of "compiles" under "student journalist." I'm sorry, guys. I don't know. So-
But if it's corrected, it doesn't need to come back for another first read.
I don't know why it had to come back again. It was just that issue before.
Well, it's a good thing it did.
Yeah. Okay. And that was the end of the policies. Yay. In our packet, we also had the school calendar. Just for reference, I guess.
Yeah, just for-
I'm wondering if you mentioned that compiles thing. Did you mention that here at the GRCU meeting?
I mentioned it here and then I said something about, do I need to mention this again at the GRCU meeting? And they said, no, no, we got it. And then-
I remember you saying something, I just wasn't sure.
We'll get it this time around.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And I do sincerely-
It takes a lot to comply all the information.
You mean compiling all the information?
Good, Chris.
All right. Chris also kindly gave us a board meeting schedule for this election year, election cycle. Just looking ahead, because I always think it's best if we have the date set as best we can now. October 10th is Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is a school holiday. I was curious if we wanted to move it or if we wanted to keep it. I know for sure I'm probably going to be going away that weekend.
In which, October?
In October, October 10th. It's, the kids have Friday and Monday off.
Right.
So, I didn't know if anybody might-
There's no school that day?
There's no school that day.
Then we don't meet that day?
Usually we don't, yeah.
No.
So, is it okay to move it to this?
Second Monday, third Monday.
The third Monday?
Fourth Monday.
That will mess you up.
The 17th, we have Corey Valley.
Yeah.
Fourth Monday typically.
So, I think we moved it to a Tuesday before.
We could, it's up to him.
What Tuesday, would a Tuesday work for you, Chris?
I have an IRE meeting on Tuesday.
Why don't you advise us what day? What day would you like us to meet, Chris?
Yeah. What day works for you?
I mean-
Do we want to do, we could do the 24th, keep it on Monday because we have the GRCSU on the 26th. The 24th is open, so.
Okay.
If we want to keep it the same week, the 12th would work.
Or Wednesday, the 12th? Whoa. What would be better for everyone?
You want the 12th or 24th?
Because if we meet on the 24th, it'll be pretty close to November 14th and pretty far from September 12th.
October 12th is okay with me.
It's a Wednesday night. Does that work for you all, Billy?
Yeah.
I would prefer to do that so we don't have two long meetings in a week. If that's okay with you, Chris?
12th, for sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Now, the only other one, are we going to meet in July, August? Typically, we take one of those months off.
I think it depends what we're doing.
I will not be around July.
Okay.
The two weeks right in the middle of it, so that's why I just say July. I don't know about anybody else, if anybody has vacation plans?
Nothing yet.
So, let's keep-
You can take July off.
Yeah.
My recommendation, if you're thinking about to do, would be not take August because we're approaching school.
Right.
There are last-minute adjustments or changes.
Past years, we've taken July off, which gives everybody a chance to take a vacation.
I don't have a problem with that, but if there's something pressing-
We can always have a special meeting and bring it up, yeah.
Because we could do that either the last Monday of June potentially, because we have that reserved in Chris's schedule, I think, the fourth Monday, right?
So, just leave it and circle back to that date?
Yeah, maybe just touch, well, we'll keep it as a probably not on July 11th, but we might have to do a virtual or a special meeting. Just try to keep it short and sweet if we do.
Something comes up, you just call one, right?
Yeah, we could just call a meeting. So, we'll-
Right.
We'll just put tentative for that one, for now. And we'll decide more at the June 13th meeting once we see what work we have.
Yeah, typically, July, we don't have much because we're out of school. We have that time off before we start really getting into the new stuff for school.
But we're only meeting once a month too, so sometimes things pile up.
I know, but we have to do that, otherwise he'd be gone every day.
Okay. Anything, any other comments on the schedule?
So, not July 1?
We're probably not going to have it July 11th unless there's a reason to have it. And if there is a reason to have it, we'll look at other options as well, like maybe the last week of June before July. So, our next meeting is May 9th. I added a section to the agenda for Good and Welfare. I wanted this section to be a place where if there is something that you wanted to bring up that you heard in the community or to benefit the school or about the school, just something to add that wasn't really something that we had to take action on, but more for just information. So, anyone has anything to share?
That's good. I don't give very many calls on what's good.
Well, I heard Sarah say that, you know, all the staff is stepping up and the students and helping to-
Oh, no, definitely.
You know, I think that's something to recognize. I don't know if anyone's aware that there is a group called the Rutland Youth Coalition that meets in town. It's a, has people from different school districts. It has from the hospital, from social tinkering, from the Boys and Girls Club. And they are trying to bring more activities and options for teenagers and middle schoolers to the area to give them something to do, to help them stay clear of trouble, which is really exciting. So, I went to my first meeting. We meet the first Tuesday morning of every month, virtually right now, I believe. And I went to my first meeting in April last week and it was very interesting. A lot going on, actually, around town. So, when I hear of things, I'll definitely bring them up. I also attended a senior capstone at Rutland High School with one of my older kids. And it was a very interesting look at underage drinking. And I thought that might be something that would be fun for the 8th graders to listen to because one of the main things she pointed, the senior pointed out was that underage drinking actually starts in 8th grade a lot of the times. And I think, you know, hearing from a student might be something helpful when they're trying to make these choices at this age. She did a really nice job. And then Stafford also did some anti-vaping videos that they had a little contest and Stafford students put them together, which were also really informative and student-led, which I think is great for younger students to see what's possible and, you know, imagine themselves doing it. So, those are some nice things out in the community and I know that they would be willing to, you know, share that if we made space for them. So, just some ideas.
That's awesome. I'm wondering if we should think about maybe an assembly or something and combine them-
I think that would be great.
For the 7th and 8th.
Yeah.
That would, of course, would be up to administration. But I think we'd get more kids that way, for sure.
And I've spoken to Angie about it and she was interested. She's doing the DARE program. So, I don't know if it's something that you have time for in the schedule, but it might be something to look at.
Yeah, I know that Mike and Keith talk about that in their health classes.
But coming from a student?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it was, it was very well done, the capstone. I didn't see the videos, but I've heard they were well-done.
Do you have a name?
Christina Kampka for the vape, the anti-vape. And Marcia Cassell for the capstone. And it was, I forget her name right now off the top of my head.
Do you just want to email those to me and I'll forward it to Mike and Keith? That'd be great, yeah.
I know Lila knows her name, but she's a senior. She did the, she was the only one that did the underage drinking one.
Yeah, yeah.
But they had some other traces too, of different capstone clinics. So. All right. So, unless there's anything else, I need a motion to move into executive session. And we'll take a 10-minute break before that to clear the plates.
Do you want to do that or in between the two?
What do you mean?
Because if we do personnel contracts first and then come out and take up-
Either way, we need them to break out.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no problem. I got you.
So, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to go into executive session?
For personnel contracts and personal request. All right, thank you.
Aye.